Trustee Radnovich, this is Danielle. I'm not sure if you heard Kiko, but he said that he didn't see your audio connected. Do you just want to do a quick test? We've got you on mute right now.
Test.
Thank you, trustee.
Good evening. This is Mayor Donald T. Lopez, Village of Los Rancho, Albuquerque. I want to welcome everyone to the Board of Trustees' special meeting slash public hearing, which is being held by Zoom video conferencing. Wednesday, February 16, 2022. I'm going to call the meeting to order now. The time is 5:00 PM. The Village of Los Rancho, of course, will be conducting this live meeting via Zoom video conferencing and streaming on its website and Facebook page. Participants can also join telephonically. The instructions and the meeting link were posted on the Village website. At this time, I'm going to call the roll. Mayor Pro Tem, trustee Sandra Pacheco. Trustee Gilbert Benavides.
Present.
Trustee Alan Lewis.
Present.
Trustee George Radnovich.
Present.
Thank you. I'm going to move to approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I need a second.
Second.
I'm going to call for the question. Call for the roll call vote. Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes.
Thank you. Item four is the public comment period. Submitted written comments will be read by the clerk. Participants wishing to speak on topics not on the agenda will be given three minutes. It is advisable to sign up prior to the meeting, obviously. Danielle, will you read the submitted written comments on behalf of the following?
Mayor trustees, I did not receive written comments or had anyone sign up prior to the meeting to speak on topics not on the agenda. However, I will ask if there is anyone present who did not sign up wishing to speak at this time again on items not on the agenda. If so, please use the raise your hand button.
I have a hand raised. Stand by. Ms. Faros, you should be able to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Camille, this is Mayor Lopez. I understand that you are speaking about the item that is on the agenda. Am I right or am I wrong?
Yes, but I can also talk about items not on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, you may. Go ahead. You have three minutes. State your name and address.
Okay, Camille Varos, 427 El Pariso, Los Rancho, New Mexico, 87107. Mayor Lopez, trustees and administrative attendees. Um, I'm just going to talk about the important agenda items that have been presented through Zoom. And I think this has been unfortunate because there's many important items, whether it's zone changing, applications for setbacks. And I think it's I think it's important that when there's items that really should have more village input, that there should be other ways to include. I know I couldn't get out notices fast enough for this special meeting. And a lot of people are having problems accessing Zoom. Provider for internet or Wi-Fi have been problematic. I know I can't seem to pull up a camera that could show my image. I know Ms. Molina asked, you know, if that's possible, and I, I still can't seem to to have that problem addressed. Therefore, I don't see how we can proceed, especially with this special meeting, because a lot of people couldn't get on on the meeting to even know that there was a negotiated agreement or subsequent, subsequential agreement that is going to dictate the way the voting is going to be tonight. And I, you know, the way it just seems to, to go is that if there's a unanimous vote amongst the Board of Trustees based on recommendations from the commissioners from the planning and zoning, that's the way the votes go. And I think that is problematic because this is about our village, not just a handful of people, whether it's and other government entities have been able to conduct items that are very important to the populace of the communities, whether it's Albuquerque, but we're speaking of our own municipality of Los Rancho.
Thank you, Ms. Faros. The time has expired. We appreciate your comments as always. Thank you.
Well, mine, my time says 28 seconds.
Well, we have a timer, Ms. Faros, but if you feel you have 28 more seconds, I will give it to you. Speak.
Okay, so how could we address this moving forward to have more people be able, because whatever the way the votes go tonight is, does not, it impacts the entire village, not just a handful of people that paid for legal representation. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Camille. We're going to move to item five now, which is the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. 5A is the minutes of the January 26th special meeting slash public hearing. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I need a second.
Second that.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six is the public hearing. A settlement of an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision for ZMA 21-03, a request by Casa Rondania Winery Real Estate Trust, comma, LLC for a zone map amendment to change A1 parentheses agricultural residential zoning to AC agricultural commercial zoning as allowed by section 9.2.15E for a property in the A1 zone in the Guadalupe Trail character area. The public hearing will also address a request for approval of a revised Planning and Zoning Commission decision in accordance with a settlement agreement between applicant and appellant's and will consider the related approvals of a revised site plan, comma, shared parking agreement, and a variance from section 9.2.15 parentheses one setbacks, period. The property is located at 765 Chavez Road Northwest and is legally known as Lot A Lands of Clifford B. Wood within projected section 29 Township 11 North, Range 3 East, New Mexico Principal Meridian, Village of Los Rancho, Albuquerque, Bernario County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Bernario County Clerk on August the 29th, 1984. The property contains 4.2475 acres, more or less. Ordinarily, I would take this opportunity to address: one, the process; two, what constitutes the record; three, disclosure of any ex parte communications; and four, conflicts of interest. However, as previously indicated, I understand the parties to this appeal have resolved their differences. Before I go to the applicant and opponents, I want to point out that it is the obligation of each trustee to declare for the record any instance where a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest might exist. Should that be the case, that trustee must then withdraw from further deliberations, including participation in discussions and any decision making. Is there any trustee who will recuse themselves from this item?
Let me make a statement.
Please.
So let me tell you what the potential situation is, and then I'm going to ask Nan Winter for her advice on this. Okay?
Go ahead.
I'll be brief. So so I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was a planning and zoning commissioner. And we first heard of this application back May 11th. And, and the, there was a deferral at that point. So I did, I did vote on that. And then it came up again on September 14th, and there was a decision made then, and I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission then as well. So I'm not quite sure if it's called a conflict of interest, but it's okay by me if it is. But I, I'm looking at, at something called the Code of Judicial Conduct. And I believe what we do is, is considered a quasi judicial proceeding, which is covered by this. And even though the, what the issue that we hear that's before us today is, is different than what, what I heard when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is very much related. So there, you know, it could be potentially gray, but I do not want to make a mistake on this because I would hate to be the reason that today's BOT decision is ever challenged in the future. So let me ask, let's see, yeah. So let me ask Nan Winter, what, what would you advise me to, to do here?
Mayor trustee, I think in accordance with judicial rule 20-211, trustee Benavides has previously sat on a matter related to this issue. And my counsel to him was that it, it, there's at least a perception that his decision making may not be, you know, maybe biased. So I had, I have previously counseled him, mayor and trustee, that he should likely recuse himself.
So please make your decision, trustee Benavides.
I will recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I would like to turn to the applicant's counsel, counsel for the opponents, and then hear from Director Justice and Attorney Winter. Starting with the applicant's counsel, without getting into details of any tentative agreement, can I ask you to make an appearance for the record and confirm who you represent?
Yes, sir. Angelo Artuso, and behind me is Rodri Eaton, if you can see us. And we represent the applicant, Casa Rondania Real Estate Trust, LLC.
Thank you. I will now refer to the counsel for the appellant's. Please make your appearance and tell us who you represent.
Mayor Lopez, honorable trustees, ladies and gentlemen, I'm David Campbell, attorney at law, and I represent the appellant's and intervenors in this matter. The appellant's and interveners I represent are by name the following: John M. and Mary Ann Eves, Gerald and Deborah Dixon, Lee and Georgia Smith, Joyce Hamel, Tim and Heather Gallegos, Randy and Linda McKee, Gerald and Nancy Rail, Doug Binder, Kurt and Summer Ferraria, Peter and Judy Weinreth, Dr. Barry Ramo and Roberta Cooper Ramo, Mary Ann Woodard, Richard and Elizabeth Gonzalez, Adam and Tanya Triolo, Marcia Adams, and William Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Please present the settlement agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board of Trustees. These appellant's who I just named filed an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision in ZMA 21-03 and opposed the application for a zone change from A1 to AC agricultural commercial at the Anamonte Winery at 765 Chavez Road. I am pleased to tell you that the appellant's and the applicant have reached a settlement of this appeal, the terms of which are set out in an eight-page document, the executed document, which has been submitted to the Village of Los Rancho. Without reading the entire settlement agreement, which is available to you and to the public, let me summarize some important elements of the agreement. Number one, the agreement has contractual requirements between the appellant's and the applicant, but also relies on the Village of Los Rancho's adopting AC or agricultural commercial zoning on the Anamonte site, along with specified enforceable conditions, a floor plan, site plan, and a shared parking agreement. Number two, there are conditions in the settlement concerning the allowed location and heights of the building or buildings to be constructed on the site, the materials and aesthetics of the structures, and the requirement that the structure or structures conform to an approved site plan and floor plan. Number three, other conditions in the settlement require a minimum of 150 onsite parking spaces to be shared between the Casa Rondania and Anamonte properties, a prohibition against parking in the neighborhoods and on public rights of way, and a requirement that signs for no parking be erected. There are certain times and events that will require a parking attendant to be on duty at the site. Number four, there are also conditions in the settlement that place limits on the number and size of events that may be conducted on the Rondania and Anamonte properties, along with limitations on the amount of sound or noise that can be generated on the properties. On the Anamonte property, for example, any amplified music must take place indoors. The village's laws must be obeyed, including the noise, the noise ordinance and the night skies ordinance. Number five, the agreement cannot be changed for a minimum of five years, and after five years, if changes are requested, notice consultation and negotiation with the neighbors is required before any application is made to the Village of Los Rancho. Number six, and finally, the settlement agreement contains important legal elements for enforceability and compliance of the terms of the agreement. Mayor and trustees, that is my summary of the settlement agreement that's been entered into by the appellant's and the applicant. The actual text of the agreement is available for the public and for this body. I would be glad to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We will get to questions when we get to the item that is under discussion, obviously. So I really appreciate you summarizing. Now I would like to call on Mr. Artuso, counsel for the applicant. Mr. Artuso, please tell us, does the applicant concur in this settlement agreement? And if so, please present your thoughts on that concurrence.
Yes, mayor and trustees, we do concur in the settlement agreement. We've signed it. It was the subject of extensive negotiations. And I believe that Mr. Campbell has fairly summarized the, most of the major points that are in the settlement. As he noted, the actual settlement has been provided to the village and is available to the public. And we respectfully request that the village take such actions as necessary to make that settlement come to life and, and finally allow the parties to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Artuso. Mr. Artuso, I also understand there is a shared parking agreement and revised site plan and floor plan. Could you please discuss the shared parking arrangement and the changes that have been made to the site and floor plan since the Planning and Zoning Commission approval, including moving the setback and the redesign of the space? Please also tell us if these changes were agreed upon in the settlement agreement.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to do so. The shared parking agreement provides that the applicant, which is at 765 Chavez, and Casa Rondania Winery, which is on the immediately adjacent property to the east, 733 Chavez, will share parking to allow visitors, contractors, customers, and vendors to one site to park on the other site or the other lot when space is available free of charge. As Mr. Campbell pointed out in the settlement agreement, there will be no fewer than 150 parking spaces between the two properties combined. The shared parking agreement provides that there is no parking on the public right-of-way alongside Chavez Road or the Chavez Road Annex, which is a private easement on the east side of the Casa Rondania Winery property. To the extent there is any parking on the private property of either the applicant or Casa Rondania Winery that is adjacent to Chavez Road or the Chavez Road Annex, that parking has to be entirely on the private property of, of those two lots. Mr. Campbell mentioned that the applicant and Casa Rondania Winery would erect and maintain signs, instructing visitors, customers, and invitees not to park on the public right-of-way of Chavez Road or the Annex, and I'm pleased to report that those signs have now been installed. The signs are installed, obviously, on the private property, not on the public property or the public right-of-way.
Yes.
Our shared parking agreement provides that if there are going to be X, an excess number of vehicles for the events at either Anamonte or Casa Rondania or both, those excess vehicles will have to park at an off-site parking lot, not located on any village-owned property on Rio Grande Boulevard or on any residential streets. And then finally, the agreement provides that there will be a parking attendant on duty on Saturdays from mid-May through mid-December, mid-September, and for all events of 50 people or more. With respect to the revised site plan, one of the aspects of the settlement is that there is now a 60-foot setback from the western property line of 765 Chavez Road, with the exception of an administrative and winery office building, which is in the shape of a, like a two-story tower. That has a 45-foot setback from the western property line. My understanding is that under the village ordinance, the 60-foot setback will require the granting of a variance since it exceeds the setback which is permitted under your ordinances by several feet. The footprint of the building, of course, shifted as a result of the setback agreement between the parties. The entrance for the building will still face toward the south, toward Chavez Road. The rooms on the east end of the property, if you look at the site plan and the floor plan, have been designed for multipurpose uses to include wine-making, retail, and event space. If you look at the site plan, you'll see there's additional room to the north for a future building or buildings, which are also subject of the settlement agreement in terms of the total amount of square footage that, that could be built on the, on the property, not to exceed 18,000 square feet. Any additional building or future building is restricted under the settlement agreement strictly to wine-making activities, equipment, or storage. The revised site plan has been reviewed and approved by Miss Justice, and we would respectfully request that the board adopt a notice of decision incorporating the key terms of the settlement, approve the revised site plan, approve the revised parking agreement, and grant a variance to permit the 60-foot setback from the western property line.
Thank you, Mr. Artuso. I'm now going to move, go, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd just like to ask counsel to additionally talk about the provisions in the shared parking agreement having to do with events. It's paragraph two, I'm sorry, paragraph five, and the subparts of that. You did talk about the parking, but the, the shared parking agreement also deals with events.
Go ahead, Mr. Artuso. Go ahead, Mr. Artuso.
Yes, in the shared parking agreement, it provides that a couple of things. Basically, the 765 Chavez Road property and the 733 Chavez Road property will share the right to hold up to 12 permissive events every month with limited numbers of attendees and staffing in accordance with the village ordinances. An event that's taking place simultaneously may not exceed the number of attendees permitted by the AC ordinance, which is that the maximum is 150 attendees for each event, and that'll be counted as two events out of the 12 that's being shared between the two properties. Additional events may not be, the monthly limit doesn't roll over. And so if you don't have your 12 events in a month, you don't get to add the unused events to the subsequent month. And I believe those are the items related to the events in the shared parking agreement. If Mr. Campbell would like me to address something further, I certainly can.
Mr. Campbell, go ahead.
I think that adequately sums up. Again, we are summarizing documents that
Of course.
all of the details written in them and that are hopefully going to be adopted by this Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, and thank you, Mr. Artuso. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Director Tiffany Justice, Village of Los Rancho's Planning and Zoning Director. Director Justice, have you reviewed the shared parking agreement and the site and floor plans? Do you recommend approval? And if so, please explain yourself.
Yes, Mayor, trustees, I've reviewed the shared parking agreement and the revised site and floor plans, and I do recommend approval as the agreement and the plans comply with the village code, with, of course, the exception of the setbacks from the western property line, which exceed the maximum allowed by Section 9.2.15i. And so the request for the variance for that section to allow for a building to be setback from the west property line 45 feet and 60 feet, as agreed upon in the settlement agreement and shown in the revised site plan, is requested as well tonight.
Thank you. Do you recommend the approval of the setbacks? It seems like you do.
Yes, I do recommend approval of the setbacks since they're agreed upon in the settlement agreement, and they also fulfill the intent of that section, 9.2.15i, to allow for further distance of the building from the neighboring homes. And the greater setback on the west side will be both landscape buffer and agricultural land, which meets other requirements of our code.
Thank you very much, Director Justice. Attorney Winter, Nan Winter, please present the proposed revised notice of decision.
Mayor, trustees, earlier this afternoon, Danielle, I believe circulated a draft notice of decision. You've seen these documents before. They're the result of usually a planning and zoning decision. As a result of this settlement, we redrafted the notice of decision. Can, have you all received that document?
I have seen it.
Okay, I can share a screen if you want me to put it up, or I can just discuss it. What's your preference, Mayor?
I would like for you to discuss it unless one of the trustees wants a more detailed and I will invite the trustees to say yes or no.
Okay, so I'll discuss it, but I can share a screen too if you want to go through it line by line.
Please discuss.
Okay, the settlement agreement, the village is not a party to the settlement agreement. So your vehicle for facilitating this settlement is the notice of decision. The notice of decision has been rewritten to include elements of the settlement agreement that are within your jurisdiction to enforce. So not everything in the settlement agreement is in or will be in the revised notice of decision. Only those things that are within your jurisdiction to enforce are contained in the revised notice of decision. The revised notice of decision, of course, makes note of the applicant and the appellee, the opponents and the appellants, and it contains the usual legal descriptions. The conditions that Planning and Zoning agreed to back in September are still included in this notice of decision. Those conditions include EPA and storm water pollution prevention plans, demolition of existing structures, future signage must comply with the sign ordinance, exterior lighting must comply with dark skies, and construction should meet all village, county, city, state codes. Those are still in here. What we have added to it is fairly significant. What we've added to it deals with everything from the dumpster to parking and events, and I'll start with the dumpster first. We have added pursuant to the settlement agreement a provision that the dumpster must be on a concrete pad at least 200 feet away from the west property line. The previous notice of decision had a different metric on the location of the dumpster, but it was addressed in the previous decision. This agreement, as noted by counsel for the applicant and the opponents, incorporates elements of a shared parking agreement and actually requests and approves or proposes your approval of the shared parking agreement. Under separate ordinance authority, you have to approve the shared parking agreement. And so therefore, this decision will include, or currently as drafted, includes a recommendation that it be approved in its current form. The likewise, it is within your purview to approve a site plan. The revised notice of decision would approve sheet S1 on the drawing dated January 31 of 2022 in the revised floor plan, sheet A1 on the drawing also dated 1/31/2022. Again, this is something that could have come back to you at a later time. We are trying to incorporate as many approvals in this process this evening as we can. Another element of the notice of decision that's different, we have added not only approval of the revised site plan, but metrics on the building. The revised notice of decision indicates that with the exception of the two-story winery office and admin space, these facilities shall be offset from the western property line of 765 Chavez by not less than 60 feet. Because, as Mr. Artuso noted, this is outside the parameters of 9.2.115 for a setback, we are requesting and recommending you grant a variance for this setback. Accordingly, I think Tiffany has indicated that there is sufficient justification for the granting of the variance. It will not cause adverse material impacts on the adjacent neighborhood or the community. Obviously, the community supports the setbacks. And owing to the special conditions, including the pending appeal, a literal enforcement of a smaller setback in this regard would certainly result in undue hardship. So no doubt in our mind at this end that there is justification for granting the variance on the wider setback. As Mr. Artuso has explained, there are also elements in this draft notice of decision that indicate that there will be no amplified music played outdoors at 765 Chavez and that all amplified music and speech shall be strictly indoors. The portal area located on the west side of 765 Chavez shall not be used for events, but wine tasting and food service incidental to an event is permitted. Another element in the proposed notice of decision is that a parking attendant shall be on duty on Saturdays from mid-May through mid-September for all events of 50 people or more at either property. Another element drafted into the revised notice of decision includes a condition and limitation on the number of permissive events on the property, and this is limited to 12 permissive events per month specified in 9.2.115. There are additional conditions attached to this particular condition, and that is that those 12 permissive events are shared between the two facilities. A second condition on the permissive events is that they cannot be rolled over or accumulated in subsequent months. They are limited to 12 per month, and that's it. They expire at the end of the month. A third condition relative to the 12 permissive events includes that permissive events taking place at both properties may have no more attendees than that permitted under the code, which is 150 attendees for each event. And that if that is the case, they will be counted as two events towards the 12. Last condition related to the events, the 12 permissive events, is that the owners of 733 and 765 Chavez shall have a minimum of 150 parking spaces available for visitors, and you heard that from both counsel. Three more conditions, and then I'll be done here. We have added to this, again, draft notice of decision, that applicant must file a written report by the fifth day of each month specifying the dates, number of attendees, and staff at each event. This is something that, this is a practice that Director Chavez is taking up with more than just this particular applicant. She has also requested this information from other businesses.
Director Justice, am I correct, Nan?
Pardon?
Do you mean Director Tiffany Justice?
Oh, yeah. Did I call her something bad?
Chavez, you said Chavez.
Okay, I think I was looking at Chavez, Director Justice. Yeah, Director Justice is already requesting these reports from other businesses in the area. So we have memorialized this reporting in the draft notice of decision. Another condition noted in the draft notice of decision is that the number of vehicles, if they exceed the permitted number of vehicles on the facility, excess parking has to be off-site, not on Rio Grande Boulevard and not on any residential street within the village. And they cannot park on the shoulder of Chavez Road either. Last condition we included in the draft notice of decision is that there will be no commercial overnight lodging on 765 Chavez at all. Of course, we supported these draft findings and conditions with findings referencing the AC zone code and, of course, the master plan. If you have any questions, I stand for them now.
Well, Attorney Winter, before we get to questions from the governing body, we'll need a motion in a second, but I do have a question for you about the motion. Does the motion need to include or can it include a motion to approve the official notice of decision, a notion, a motion to approve the shared parking agreement, and a motion to also approve the granting of the variance?
Mayor, trustees, the motion is probably approving the draft notice of decision, which includes a request for approval of a variance, request for approval of the site plan, and request for approval of the shared parking agreement.
That answers my question. So at this time, I do need a motion from a member of the governing body.
I want to make sure I get this right. So I'm making a motion to approve the draft notification of decision and the different elements included in it. Is that proper?
Attorney Winter, is that okay?
I think that covers it.
Thank you. I now need a second. Thank you. Now, is there any discussion from the governing body at this time? Go ahead, Trustee Pacheco.
Mayor, I just have just a few questions, I guess, or just clarifications with regard to the number of shared events, which is 12. If there are, if there is two events that are taking place at each property, there can be up to 300 people. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Attorney Winter, do you have the answer to that question?
I would defer to Mr. Campbell and Mr. Artuso, but that's the way I read the settlement agreement.
Mr. Campbell first.
Sure. Yes, and this relates to the AC zone that you have in the ordinance already, and that has a maximum number of events that can be conducted in any month. By, without looking at the ordinance, it is four events not to exceed 150 persons and eight events not to exceed 50 persons. So those limitations are already in the AC zone and are adapted or adopted by this amount. And I think the agreement, the settlement agreement, is clear that those 12 possible events are shared between the two properties and are not allowed to be duplicated on each property. But to your specific question, should there be two simultaneous events of that magnitude of 150? Then in fact, there would be a very large gathering of 300, but that counts against the allowed monthly limits. Over to counsel for Casa Anamonte.
Mr. Artuso, can you comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Trustee Pacheco, that is correct. If there were simultaneous events on the two properties that were up to 150 each, that would be 300 people. That would be the maximum. I would point out that after the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zone change, the status that we had at that point in time was that there could be 12 events at 733 Chavez and 12 events at 765 Chavez. And what the applicant has done is agreed to cut that in half. And so the fact that there could be two simultaneous 150-person events is something that we think is both reasonable and necessary in order for the properties to be able to successfully use the AC zone and to remain viable businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Artuso. So, Trustee Pacheco?
Thank you both for your answers. I guess the other question that comes up then is the parking. So you mentioned that there is going to be shared parking between the two properties of up to 150 spaces, correct? And if I'm looking at Anamonte, what I see is 67 spaces on that property. So I'm assuming that what another 83 will be available on the Casa Rondania site. Is that right?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, the actual language is not less than 150. It's not up to 150, but it's not less than 150 spaces. So that's a floor, not a ceiling. And yes, as to the sharing of those parking spaces between the two sites, I think your calculations are correct, but I'll leave it to counsel to correct me.
Mr. Artuso, do you agree with that?
Actually, the number of spaces on the site plan should be 75. That's what was planned. I haven't counted them, but the idea was there would be 75 spaces on Anamonte and 75 spaces at Casa Rondania. And yes, Mr. Campbell is correct. The agreement is that there will be not fewer than 150 spaces. And there are other areas on the property, you know, access, dirt roads and stuff like that that can be used to accommodate parking, additional parking, should that become necessary, you know, within compliance with the ordinances and regulations and making sure we don't block emergency vehicles, that sort of thing. But the settlement agreement is no fewer than 150, and my understanding is 765 is designed for 75, and there are 75 at Casa Rondania.
Thank you, Mr. Artuso. Trustee Pacheco?
Okay, and I apologize. I didn't count each of the parking spaces, but I went off what was listed on the site plan with regard to the parking. So there very well could be the 75 spaces listed on there. Let's see. Business hours. I was a little confused on the business hours of, let's say, three things. First, the winery itself. Secondly, the events. And then thirdly, general work, farm equipment, anything that's going to take place at the winery. Can you just clarify what the hours of operation are going to look like in those three scenarios?
So, Mr. Artuso, why don't we start with you?
Yes, sir. Events can go up to 11:00 PM. Yes, sir. Uh, events can go up to eleven PM. Is my understanding. The winery itself, uh, if if I could ask the uh. Uh, Mr. Calvin.
The Casa Rondeña is. Is uh, twelve to seven.
Seven PM, so noon to seven PM for the winery itself.
And uh, Animonte is, I think the ordinance is a little bit different. It goes to. Till from eleven to six.
Okay.
And we were advised by Ms. Justice early on that it would be easier. To just keep that, keep that the same. And we're willing to live with it, but. At some point, we hope that we can make them both the the same. Twelve to seven, but we're willing to live with the ordinance as it is right now.
And then just for general work on the vineyards and.
General work on the vineyard has to has to be from uh. Uh, you know, sometimes you work at night when we're harvesting at night. Sometimes, you know, it's a working vineyard. And so I, I think we could say that uh. Uh, you know, from, from. From sunrise until eleven PM, just like the events that we wouldn't be. Working in the vineyard other than those hours. But why would, why would there ever be a question about that in an agricultural operation?
Does that, does that answer your question, trustee Pacheco?
It does. And I know that there was some discussion uh, in the past with regard to just um. And I, I realize we work, we live in a, in a agricultural community. And of course, there's going to be farm equipment and that kind of thing. But I was just wondering if within. This agreement, if it was discussed, um, if there would be certain hours that, you know, that these type of. This type of work could be done. I was just wanting clarification.
Mister Mayor, if I'm, if I might. This uh, the, the agreement does not uh vary. The um, hours that are set out in the agricultural commercial zone for events. Now. I know that Mister Artuso may have said events can go to eleven o'clock. Um, I don't think that's the number. I think it's actually earlier. Um, but I would defer to the language of the agricultural commercial. Uh, zone that's in the ordinance. I thought it was ten o'clock.
So Director Justice, can you answer that question?
Uh, yes, Mayor trustees, uh, I'm looking at our code right now on our website um, under the AC zone. Um, for permissive events, uh, those events uh, beginning no earlier than eight AM and ending prior to eleven PM. So eleven or ten, ten fifty-nine.
Okay, thank you, Director Justice. Any further comment, uh, Mister Campbell?
Um, I have none. Thank you.
Okay, so trustee Pacheco, go ahead.
Okay, moving on, um, with regard to enforcement, and I know that this was also um. A, a, a subject of um, confusion. With regard to what's going to happen now, who is going to be enforcing? Uh, some of the things that we're talking about in the agreement and noise levels, those kind of thing. And. Who do we call if there's general, you know, issues? Is there speeding? I would assume it's, it's the sheriff's office and. Uh, and I don't know if uh, Fred can address some of those things for us.
I don't even know if Fred is on. Fred, are you on?
Yes, Mayor, I'm on.
Why don't you comment on that?
Sure, uh, Mayor trustee Pacheco, trustees, uh, any violation of our ordinance can be enforced by the Burnley County Sheriff's Office. Uh, the parking per se, uh, the village is going to also place the official no parking signs and on Chavez Road. Uh, those can then be enforced by the Burnley County Sheriff's Office. Uh, if there's noise complaints, uh, same thing, they can report those to the Burnley County Sheriff's Office. Uh, uh, at, at any time, uh, or they can during the day. They, they can report those to the Village Los Ranches, to the code enforcement. So there, there's multiple ways to, to enforce that. Uh, I, I think the, the biggest thing is, is uh, it'll be a learning process, to be honest with you, with everybody. Uh, but I've already talked to Captain Romero from the sheriff's office. Uh, on parking situations, as long as we post the, the legal no parking signs uh, in our right of ways. Uh, if people violate that, they have the ability to enforce that.
Thank you, Fred. Trustee Pacheco, go ahead.
Uh, let's see, and, and just to clarify, so no changes to the agreement can be made until after twenty twenty-seven. Is that correct?
Mister Campbell?
The, those, that, yeah, that is, those are the terms of the settlement agreement. That's correct.
Go ahead.
Okay, I think that answers my questions for the moment.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions from the other members of the governing body?
I don't have any.
Trustee Radnovich?
I do have a question, Mayor. I just, I'm, it's more of a clarification. I count sixty-eight spaces on the site plan. And I'm just curious where the other seven are. Is, are they along the gravel road? Leading up to the uh, parking lot from. Uh Chavez Road, or are they in that gravel area? Uh, what appears to be a gravel area in the front, where the, uh, just to the north of the new fence. Just asking.
Mister Artuso, do you know the answer perhaps?
I do not know the answer at the moment. Uh, I can see if someone here may uh, may have uh, that answer, but let me uh, let me find out. I know. That the intent was to design it with seventy-five spaces. So give me just a moment, please.
I think the uh, trustee Radnovich, I, I think the indication of having seventy-five. Allows the applicant the opportunity to design the seventy-five. So if there isn't seventy-five on the plan, they have to be somewhere. They have to be, they have to be someplace on the property, right?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, that's, that's, that I think is, is maybe the.
Not shown on the plan is why I questioned it.
I understand. Any other questions, trustee Radnovich?
One other.
Sure.
I, uh, and, and this is actually more in favor of uh, Mister Campbell's uh. Um, appellants, uh, but it appears on the site plan that. There's actually forty-seven uh, feet, seven inches of setback on the site plan, not, not forty-five. Uh, so I just wanted to note that.
Okay. That's more than forty-five, right?
No, it is.
Okay, any more questions, sir?
Duly noted.
Um, no more questions. Thank you.
Uh, I, at this point, uh, we have no further discussion from the governing body. I do want to point out on page nine of your packet. Is a submitted written comment. We will now go to those who signed up with the clerk prior to tonight's meeting wishing to speak. Uh, Danielle, do you want to take it from here?
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Yes, we have uh, Ms. Camille Vados. Who signed up prior to the meeting wishing to speak. Kiko, if you wouldn't mind moving her over, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, am I unmuted? This is Camille Vados.
I can hear you.
Okay. You know, when this application. Came before planning and zoning.
Ms. Vados. Sign, please uh, restating your full name and address. Sorry, and then you have three minutes.
Um, Camille A. Vados, four, two, seven El Pariso, Los Ranchos. Um. When the application came before the planning and zoning for its own change. Um, there was three hundred plus people who signed up opposing of. At the. A one to AC. And. And then there was a handful of people. Who then hired. A legal team, uh consultant as David Campbell, and that was never shared, shared. To most of the three hundred people. Now. I don't see. That. Many difference in the settlement. Agreement, negotiated agreement that was. Agreed upon between the appellate attorney. And um. Mister Calvin's attorney. So we didn't know this and. The traffic regardless is still going to impact our neighborhood. We felt that there was no need for another winery. Or an event center. Events took place at Calvin's. Um. And if there's no. True monitoring of traffic down neighborhoods because apparently there's not going to be any. Uh, allowed parking in front on Chavez. Or it says no near. Uh neighborhoods. So. Does that? Those are problems that have occurred all along. And when people are wanting to get to an event, they're going to find the, the first available space. And. Who is going to truly monitor that? And. Whether or not. Uh, the negotiated agreement is really going to be truly followed. When I've approached. Um, the village for questioning about. Setbacks and. And um. Blockage of foliage that has caused some hazardous areas. I was told that there's just, they don't have the staff to do that. So once we open up this. Um, and not even considering what our village truly is about, changing the venue. Of residential areas to commercial. That's just going to open up changes for a village that. For the majority of. Uh, the residents don't want. We want to keep the village of village. And if we can't think of voices as myself. To be heard, to be commented, I could comment from now until whenever, and I have. And where does it go? And. The most of the three hundred petitioners. Did not. Were not included. And they used us. To fight and appeal to begin with. And that's an injustice. And. Um, it's still going to create traffic down. Um, neighborhood, near neighborhoods, whether it's down Guadalupe, down Chavez. Which I is our historical route.
Ms. Vados, can, can you um, finish your thought? Your time um, has gone over by a minute and a half.
Well, I, I'm looking at the blue sky timer and I have a minute. And forty-two seconds.
No, that is the time you've been, oh, you're going, you've gone over.
Oh, I've gone over? Okay, so can any of my questions or comments be considered?
Of course they can be considered. We are noting.
Where is it going?
Uh, I'm not going to answer that question. Camille, your time is up. I appreciate your comments, okay? That's it. So at this time, I am going to ask the question. Is there anyone who did not sign up prior to the meeting who also spoke at the September fourteenth? Twenty twenty-one meeting wishing to speak at this time? If so, please use your raise your hand button. No hands raised, Kiko?
No, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes.
I'm going to announce the decision. The official notification of decision has been approved by the Board of Trustees with everything that is contained within it. Uh, at this time, I understand that Mister Randy McKee wishes to speak. Randy, are you still on?
Mister McKee is on, um, I, would you like me to bring him in?
Yes, ask him if he wants to speak. I understand he wanted to speak earlier and we overlooked that aspect of it.
Mayor, this will be noted under public comment on items not listed on the agenda as we did overlook him. Uh, before we went on to the next item.
I understand, and that's why I'm asking him to speak at this time if he wishes to.
I believe I'm on.
Yes.
I have not requested to speak, but if I do have time, I would like to uh, make a comment.
Of course.
I am an appellant and I will say that this has not been a very pleasurable endeavor for any of us. We know and understand that we ended up in a negotiation. I do hear Camille Vados. This complaint and her issues that are out there and. We did let a handful of people know that we were out. Uh, negotiating, but I don't think we got back with all of the applicant or all of the signers on the petition that did not want this to happen. And she is correct. There are a lot of people out here that did not want this to happen. We knew and understood that we were going in against strong headwinds with the village. Planning and zoning already having to prove this. We had no ability. To understand whether the Board of Trustees would stand up behind us and holding this off. So we felt the only way that we could answer this was to actually try to negotiate with uh, the applicant. We don't want this in any form or fashion, but we do understand that if you all were going to go ahead and go forward with it, we had to negotiate and understand that. Uh, the outcome could only be. A bit advantageous to us in controlling the noise and the, and the, and the traffic pollution and the traffic congestion. By negotiating through with this team and, and getting it done. We, we didn't see any way, other way to do it, and we would like to let everyone know that is in, involved in this, that this is not. The best outcome for the residents. We would hope that the village would have done a much better job at protecting our zoning. This is residential and Mister Artuso, Mister Calvin bought the property and came in and changed it. We had no expectation of that. Going to agricultural, commercial, and now we have an enterprise where as, as uh. Commissioner Pacheco, trustee Pacheco looked a little bit concerned, and that's that. This is going to be a noisy mess here. We've already recorded. Um, some of these events at over seventy-five and eighty decibels. We've turned, turned those in. And we just would like everyone to know that this is, this is going to have to be managed very, very carefully. I am an appellant and I do agree that this, this uh. Uh, agreement had to be in place, but it's only because. We were not able to get what we needed from the village trustees, and that's very disappointing. I will tell you that.
Mister McKee, um, would you please give us uh, your full address for the.
George Randall McKee, seven forty-nine and seven forty-seven Chavez Road Northwest.
Thank you, Mister. At this point in time. Go ahead.
My apologies. We have another hand raised. Um, I just want to point out again. This was under public comment for items not on the agenda. So um, Kiko, would you mind letting this individual in?
Go ahead.
Stand by.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, um, please state your name and your full address for the record. And you'll be commenting under public comment on items not on the agenda. Go ahead, please.
Uh, Jennifer Keeper, seven twenty-two Mullen.
Jennifer Keever, 722 Mullen Road Northwest, Los Ranchos. So, um, I know this is not on the comment or not anything on the agenda. All I want to say is good job to the, to the trustees for approving this for Casa Rondeña. I am within walking distance. I think what Casa Rondeña has had to go through has been absurd. You know, after purchasing the property, I grew up in the North Valley. I've lived next to large properties that have been acquired by developers and individuals that have turned it into subdivisions. So I'm very grateful that that didn't happen with this property and that it's being used for something that's very aesthetically pleasing and that they're working with their neighbors to do what they can. And going above and beyond what they quite frankly, in my opinion, really needed to do by, you know, with, with limiting their, their events and limiting all the, all the stuff that they're complying with, just to make some neighbors happy. So good job. I love to see business being new to Los Ranchos. I'd love to see the entrepreneurial spirit. And love to see the aesthetic pleasing, open space and people with the opportunity to utilize that space rather than just small parcels of houses and developments coming in. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Jennifer. So at this time, I understand that Trustee Benavides may have a comment to make. Is that correct, Trustee Benavides?
Yes, if I may, just, just three minutes and.
Yes.
We're done. So it, yeah, it was actually very difficult for me to stay quiet, given that I was so involved with, with this particular application as a P and Z Commissioner. So I, I, I think the outcome was great. But what I do want to say is, is I, I realized this was a difficult process. This was no cakewalk. This was not decided over a game of golf. This, you know, this, this was a tough one. And because I know how hard it was, I, I have, I have respect for both sides for coming to an agreement. And yeah, not in, I, I, I think not everybody's going to be happy, but this was a, a pretty darn good compromise that, that is livable. So I'm, I'm glad that I was part of that process. I want to acknowledge that Dan Gay, even though his approach was wildly different than my approach, he, he had a contribution in this as well. There are some lessons to be learned, and I think for, we could save that for another day, but things like organization matters and paying attention to our code matters. Staying involved in your community matters. So these are things that we, I hope we can talk about at another time with, with the mayor and the Board of Trustees. And I, I had mentioned to the, to the Board of Trustees in a formal discussion that I would like to look at the AC code and revise it. So, so just, just a heads up on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. It is 6:08 PM. I need a second.
I second.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for participating. I appreciate it. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.